I want to welcome you to our campus and to what is a new venue for this, the 16th State of the Trade and Transportation Industry Town Hall Meeting with a theme of Partners in Innovation. Since its beginning, since the first town hall in 1999, amazingly enough, our goal has been to provide a forum in which to explore key issues that are challenging the goods movement industry and the many stakeholders who are in some way connected to the industry. And that includes, of course, ports, marine terminal operators, cargo handlers, the consumer of goods, labor, and of course, the residents of the local communities through which the goods pass on their way to destinations across the globe. Over these many years, we've tackled such key topics as the environment, productivity, and security. We've done point-counterpoints where we've taken opposing sides and considered possible scenarios for the future of our region as a trade gateway. And these are from vastly different perspectives. But over the years, we've seen an evolution, not only in terms of the topics discussed, but in the ways that the various stakeholders have engaged with each other. We've witnessed, I think, an appreciation of the need to recognize the importance of trade to our region, even if all of the parties around the table don't always agree on how to get there. And that, in fact, is the purpose of the town hall, to discuss issues of common concern and interest to our community in a respectful way and in the spirit of education. Tonight, we showcase that spirit of cooperation with a discussion of how the Southern California trade sector is playing an important leadership role in resolving supply chain problems through innovation, whether it's technological, operational, or institutional. And it's very fitting that this is the theme for a night when we honor and recognize one of the founders and champions of the town hall, Dr. Dominic Moretti, who believes fervently in the need for and the benefit of convening groups like this as a way of strengthening our region as a whole. But more on Dominic in a little bit. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to my dean, Jeet Joshi, the dean of the College of Continuing and Professional Education and the Associate Vice President for International Education here at Cal State Long Beach, to welcome you on behalf of the university. Dr. Joshi, Dean Joshi, has been at a number of these town halls, and he's seen that evolution as well, and I'm really glad that he can welcome you on behalf of Cal State Long Beach. So please help me welcome Dean Joshi.
Thank you, Tom. I'm delighted to welcome you all to California State University Long Beach and this annual State of the Trade and Transportation Industry Town Hall Meeting 2016. As Tom mentioned, President Jane Connolly was very much looking forward to being here tonight, but unfortunately, due to some unexpected travel needs that she had, she couldn't be here. President Connolly sends her best regards to all of you. As you know, this town hall is organized by the College of Continuing and Professional Education and its Center for International Trade and Transportation. I want to recognize the work of our executive director and his team, CITT, Dr. Tom O'Brien. CITT is an outstanding team, as you know. The impact of this event is always made greater by the award-winning videos produced by the Advanced Media Production. It's an annual event, and they work throughout the year in terms of putting this video together. And that we're able to share this with our community groups, schools, and industry associations across the globe. I want to also recognize the Advanced Media Production Director, Dave Kelly, for his excellent work on this video. Dave, I don't know, you are in the audience. I understand that this evening you will discuss important issues, important topics, such as how supply chain stakeholders are working together to identify innovative solutions that improve supply chain efficiency and effectiveness. Incentives for stakeholders to work together to make the supply chain more transparent. Also addressed, you know, will be the increasing role of technology and supply chain, technology-driven solutions, and the impact of the regulatory environment on either encouraging or discouraging innovation. While the town hall has traditionally been port-related or terminal-centric, so to speak, this year's event will also emphasize relationships outside the state, outside the gate, not state, outside the gate, including those between truckers and beneficial cargo owners and shippers. By organizing this event, the university is also fulfilling its mission by providing valuable research, education, and professional development programs, and outreach in goods movement industry, which is vital to our area for the economic well-being of our region, our state, and the nation as a whole. The importance of this event is that the university is able to provide a neutral forum with an educational focus for discussion of key issues facing the goods movement industry and our community. And that the conversation will create opportunity for us to be partners in innovation. The College of Continuing and Professional Education and its Center for International Trade and Transportation is dedicated to delivering educational programs, innovative research, and community outreach in the area of goods movement. As you know, CITT is the Long Beach home of the several major research centers. Our research portfolio features policy analysis in the areas of trade and transportation as well as workforce development. Our outreach programs include educational forums that include research conferences, such as the International Urban Freight Conference, and the media-based efforts, including podcasts and the newspaper columns that engage the broader community in the discussion surrounding international trade and transportation. All together as a university, including our College of Business Administration, Engineering, Natural Sciences, Liberal Arts, and the College of Continuing and Professional Education, our programs spans from a single course with a specific focus to a particular, you know, topic area to a certificate programs for entry and mid-career professionals, and to a bachelor's degree and to a master's degree in supply chain management and related field. That is our strength. And of course, public forum like tonight's event, the nationally-recognized State of the Trade and Transportation Town Hall, which we have been conducting since, as Tom mentioned, 1999, in the 16th year. Our active engagement in research projects and initiatives have created a global network of resources through our partnerships in the Metrans University Transportation Center with USC, the MetroFRET Center for Excellence through the Volvo Foundation, that includes USC, CUNY, Korean Transportation Institute, COTI, and the French Transportation Technology and Science Institute, the National Center for Sustainable Transportation, a consortium again with USC, UC Davis, UC Riverside, UC, University of Vermont, and Georgia Tech, and the Southwest Regional Surface Transportation Workforce Development Centers of Excellence. Our outreach and engagement begins with all of these programs we do with you, with the industry, with the community, with different organizations. The town hall is perhaps our highest-profile event, but CITT is working year-round to connect the university with local, regional, and national organizations. While the university is a focal point for innovation, I believe that it can play an expanded role in helping industry with the right education and training programs and producing a skilled workforce. I wish you all a productive evening and a lively conversation. Thank you for being here.
We have another important guest tonight to offer his comments and his welcome to you all. Representative Alan Lowenthal is the representative for California's 47th Congressional District, and he's been another longtime friend of the university and CITT. And I know he's paid his dues by taking part in a number of these town hall events. His bio, as you all know, he's certainly been in the midst of a lot of these discussions surrounding the port community over the years as a Long Beach City Councilman, a California Assemblyman, and a state senator. And we're really pleased to have him welcome you tonight as well. So Congressman Lowenthal.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Tom mentioned, I'm Congressman Alan Lowenthal. I've been around for a long time, let me tell you. I've been around, you know, I got out of graduate school and I began to teach here at Cal State Long Beach over 40 years ago, and I was a professor of psychology, just community psychology, very much interested in prevention, was an activist in the Long Beach community. And I've been very fortunate to be then, to be elected to be the representative of this district. And really, the issues that we're discussing here are the same issues that really kind of activated me and drove me to going into elected office and shaped me, I will tell you. In 1990, 91, 92, when I first ran for city council from the port of Long Beach through the east side of Long Beach, I walked my district, tried to tell people why I was, this was 92, 1991, 92, why I was running for office. And they said, "Well, Alan, that's really interesting, but what's this black soot in the window?" And that has started a over 20-year to understand what that black soot was, to learn more about diesel particulates. And I will tell you, when I first started in, I was elected in 1992, very interesting, I'll tell you, that was just around the time of the, I was elected three weeks before the Rodney King decision, and kind of much of Long Beach burned down. People said, "Lowenthal, if you're elected to the city council, property values will drop." And property values did drop three weeks after I was elected. So, you know, I've been through all this. I kind of understand a lot. And so after I, you know, but just to give you a little bit of the climate of, you know, we're here to talk about cooperation and collaboration and how we really move towards partners in innovation. I will tell you that we have a wonderful story here, all the people in this room to tell about Long Beach and LA. You know, when I first started in 1992, there were a million pounds of metric coal dust that was uncovered sitting out here in the port area. We had thousands and thousands of the dirtiest trucks going in and out of the ports. We had huge carbon pollution from the ships that came in. We had trucks that were idling for hours, they couldn't get in. We had the ports that were operating eight hours a day. That's really what the system was, the best ports in the United States. And really, we're maybe LA even a little bit more than Long Beach, but that was because they're geographic. There was a war going on between the communities and the ports. You know, people, the communities didn't understand the ports, the ports didn't understand the community back then. It was just seen as just something to get through. It took a lot of work from a lot of people here, some elected officials, I was part of that process, many, many community activists, all the staff at the ports, the ILWU, business leaders, to come together and make these ports the greenest, the cleanest, and the most efficient in North America and the world, and to be really proud. Lot more to go, but we really have demonstrated out with everybody working together that we can really make it. Now, I'm here to also report, that's what we've done out here, I'm here to also report, you know, glad tidings from Washington. I can't give you the same story from Washington DC at this moment, although I was telling Jen, as when I first came, as she, you know, she was asking me, "How are you dealing with it?" And she said, you know, and I keep telling everybody when I first start to talk that I'm a psychologist. So when people ask me, "How do you go to such a place that's so dysfunctional like the Congress?", I keep telling everyone, "I have sought out dysfunctionality my entire life. I thrive on dysfunctionality. That's what I really like to be around, to understand dysfunctionality." So for me, it was just a great opportunity to practice my craft and my trade. And I'll just kind of, and things are not quite as bad, you know, I still believe that the nation needs a national freight infrastructure. We need to know what our nation's goals are. And we need to have a sustainable funding stream to pay for it because we have a crumbling infrastructure. I think the FAST Act really does show that we can work together. We now did for six years. We have, you know, we have an investment for the first time in freight, not a whole lot, a couple hundred million dollars, but it's right there. People are beginning to become, you know, but that we, to understand the needs, that the nation will move forward if we can embrace trade and if we can really build upon and build an infrastructure that can accommodate the future, and it really impacts every part of the nation. But we're still having a difficult time kind of coming to grips with that issue, how we're going to, what's our policy going to be, how, you know, what should be the components of the policy and how we're going to fund it. I worked on a bill, which I thought was very fair. I think that ultimately, we will be moving much more towards some kind of user fees to talk about this. Remember, when I was in the state legislature, I did a container fee. When I'm here, I now have a user fee. As long as the money is dedicated and it comes back to the, you know, to the regions and to the states, we can do some long-term planning, and maybe we can fix those bridges, fix those roads, and then begin to build a rail infrastructure, work with the private sector that we're really proud of in the nation. And so I think those are on our agenda, as I say, you know. People say, "Well, are you ever going to get there?" Well, I will tell you, if we use this as a model, when I first came in in 1992, as I said, people told me, "You cannot fix this. We cannot meet the needs of our communities and the environmental needs and also grow the ports. They're incompatible." And we have demonstrated out here that they're not incompatible. If we work together, if everybody's got a seat at the table, if we figure out, if we have a plan, and we have incentives to fund it, we can do it. And I think we have a great story to tell. And so I'm so proud of everybody that's here. Want to welcome you to Long Beach, and as a representative of our dysfunctional government, I can tell you that it's doing a little bit better than what the press says, but, you know. But then again, we'll see what happens. So with that, thank you all for being here, and I applaud all of you.
I suppose when we start with dysfunction, we can only go up, right? So that's my goal for the evening, right? Before we get started with the formal program, I do want to recognize a couple of other people in the room, some special guests. First and foremost, our students. This is an educational forum, and we have representatives here from the Global Logistics Specialist Program, the Marine Terminal Operations Professional Program, the Master of Science and Supply Chain Management, and a group welcome, special welcome to the East LA College Logistics Program students. So thank you. That's your future workforce, and we're thrilled to be in that business. And many thanks as well to our dedicated instructors and professors. A couple of other very special people in the room tonight I would like to point out, Helene Ansel, the Office of Congressman, Alan Lowenthal, Fran Inman from the California Transportation Commission, Tim Mozea, the Associate Dean of the College of Continuing and Professional Administration, Mike Solt, the Dean of the College of Business Administration, and Lauren Brand, the Associate Administrator for Intermodal System Development for the Maritime Administration. Welcome to you all. And I'd also like to thank our sponsors who make sure that we can keep this event free of charge and open to the public and allow us to upgrade to the sushi, which is vitally important. So if you enjoyed it, please make sure that you thank the Long Beach City College Doing What Matters, Watson Land Company, BNSF Railway, and the LA Customs Brokers and Freight Forwarders Association, who were sponsors of this event, our core funders for Metrans, the US Department of Transportation, and Caltrans, and our Metrans associates, who provide the core support for the Metrans Center. And that's the Port of Long Beach, the Southern California Association of Governments, LA Metro, Aerospace, APM Terminals, Majestic Realty, and the International Longshoreman and Warehouse Union. So I love you. Thank you all. There's one last group which guides the development of our program each and every year, and that's the CITT Policy and Steering Committee. Their names are listed on the program, and I'd like you to help me recognize them and thank them for making this night possible as well. They represent all segments of our industry and community, and we couldn't do what we do at CITT without their assistance. There's one name on that list, Dominic Moretti, who was instrumental in making the town hall happen and making sure that the ILWU was at the table from the beginning. In fact, the town hall began life as the ILWU State of the Trade and Transportation Town Hall. Dominic passed away February 17th, and it's a tremendous loss to all of us. Dominic was something of a waterfront Renaissance man, as your program indicates. He was a proud longshoreman, a proud graduate of this university. He received his bachelor's and his master's from Cal State Long Beach, and he received his PhD from UCLA. He split his days between the docks, first as a member of Local 13, and then as a shipping clerk for Local 63, with time spent in the classroom as well as a teacher at Dodson Junior High, and then as Dr. Moretti, a professor at East Los Angeles College, where he helped to establish the international trade program. He was passionate about education, understanding that there was something new to learn about this industry, no matter how long you had worked in it or lived in its shadow. He was my own personal instructor. I got a chance to work with him on a book chapter. I was supposed to be helping him, but I learned a lot more in the process. He fought furiously, but good-naturedly and with a quiet confidence to bridge the gap between dock worker and terminal operator, industry and community, and perhaps most important to me, between the industry and the university. Dominic's most quoted phrase at our Policy and Steering Committee meetings was that the most vital role we could play through the town hall and all of our other programs was to bring the university to the docks and the docks to the university. And there's no better person than Dominic himself to convey that message. I'd like to share this 50 seconds from our 10th anniversary town hall.
More than ever before, and especially in these very uncertain and troubling economic times, all of us in the goods movement industry needs to keep the town hall philosophy alive, which is continuous education, engagement, cooperation, and consensus among our members and the community at large. Now is the time for all of us to collectively marshal forces and develop strategies to keep the ports of San Pedro Bay competitive and the choice port for all Pacific Rim cargo. Thank you for helping us celebrate the close of our 10th annual town hall meeting, a milestone of industry and community outreach and communication. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
The Policy and Steering Committee, like so many other groups, wanted to recognize Dominic in some way. The Propeller Club has established a scholarship in his name, and we encourage everyone to support that. That was another group near and dear to his heart. What our group decided that we could do was first and foremost ensure that what we remained committed to was his desire to bring everyone along the supply chain together in pursuit of shared goals. And we'll continue to do that with the town halls and our other community and industry outreach and training programs. And I'm happy to announce that starting next year, we will be using this forum to recognize someone with an award in Dominic's name who has broken down barriers among and between the many stakeholders engaged in trade in our region to the betterment of the community as a whole. And our Policy and Steering Committee will be working to establish the criteria and the nomination process, and we'll keep everyone informed. But we think it will be a fitting way to remember him on an annual basis and constantly remind us of our core mission as a center. Dominic's daughter Sharon Christensen and her son, Dominic's grandson Devin, are here tonight. Sharon and Devin, I hope you'll both accept our very sincere condolences and our thanks, and the thanks of the entire industry for Dominic's many contributions. Please stand, Sharon and Devin. And I think the congressman has, we have some flowers to make sure that on your long trip back to Camarillo, even though it's going to be quick, right?
Yeah.
So.
I'd like to present these to you, the CITT dad, who was just one of the candidates. She was a student of mine here at Long Beach.
Thank you. And now on to what Dominic would want us to focus on, the town hall. Tonight's agenda is in your program. In a few moments, I'm going to invite Bill Mongaluzzo, the Senior Editor for the Journal of Commerce, to the stage. He's going to be your moderator for the evening and provide a brief overview of tonight's topic, Partners in Innovation. And he's going to introduce another fabulous video that Dean Joshi mentioned that Dave Kelly and the AMP team put together, which will set the stage for this discussion tonight. Following it is our panel discussion with questions from you, the audience, and then we'll conclude with a wrap-up. The format and the guidelines for the comment section are included in your program. We ask you to keep questions to the point and on topic. We certainly don't discuss things like contract negotiations, which might get us off topic. No multiple-part questions, and we ask that you, you're careful to keep it to questions instead of commentary. You can ask questions by either submitting a card to one of the ushers, which will be along the side, or there will be mics at each side if you want to come up and ask your question there. So at this point, I'd like to invite Bill Mongaluzzo up to the stage to start the formal
Thank you, Tom. And what a warm and heartfelt eulogy you gave to Dominic, for Dominic Moretti. He certainly deserved it. Thank you for inviting me to be moderator of this panel and for assigning such great panelists for me. And thank you for inviting me to Cal State Long Beach. I feel like I'm your neighbor. We're right up the street here. Okay, well, why innovation, cooperation, and collaboration? The simple answer is, the old way of handling cargo just won't cut it anymore. And really, this was brought to light graphically in the last week of December 2015, when the largest vessel ever to dock at a North American port, the 18,000 TEU CMA CGM Benjamin Franklin, visited the port of Los Angeles. And then in February, it revisited Southern California at the port of Long Beach. So what's so special about that? The ports had already been handling vessels of up to 14,000 TEUs. Well, what this did is it let the US port industry know that our ports are going to have to be able to handle the largest ships afloat, just like the ports in Asia and Europe have been handling, if we're going to be world-class. And sure enough, shortly after the second visit of the Benjamin Franklin to Southern California, CMA CGM announced that beginning in May, we are going to have a regular weekly service with these vessels, calling every week. A string of six ships will be calling at the PCT Terminal in Long Beach. So what are the implications of these big ships? Well, you just don't handle them the way you used to handle them. When the Benjamin Franklin arrived, it, the preparation began weeks before the ship ever got here. The longshoremen were marshaled together, and we were assured that there would be enough longshore labor to handle the vessel when it was in. The truckers were brought into the meetings so that we could be sure that there was enough truck capacity, the equipment providers, the chassis providers, the terminal operators, shipping line. All of the representatives got together under the auspices of the port to coordinate their efforts, because within a very relatively short period of time, three and a half days, a vessel that potentially could have an exchange of as many as 17,000 container moves in one vessel call arrived in LA Long Beach. And we're going to be The way the trans-Pacific services work in the Pacific Southwest is the vessel makes its last call in Asia, it comes here, and at least 80, 85% of the vessel is worked right here. And then the ship moves up to Oakland, and the containers are topped off there on the vessel, and it heads back to Asia. New York, New Jersey would be the closest we have in this country, where the ships go there and they handle about 60% of the contents. But then they do the milk run down to Norfolk and Savannah, Charleston, whatever. In Asia and Europe, even though those ports handle more containers per year than L.A. Long Beach, they also do a milk run, where a vessel could make multiple calls from Hong Kong, Southeast Asia, the Middle East, Europe, before heading to the United States. So here in L.A., Long Beach, we're always going to have cargo surges that are much greater than any other port in the world. And what these cargo surges do is they cremate a tremendous strain on the marine terminal, on the gates, and on the inland infrastructure that leads to the ports. So with that as the setting, let's watch the video, and then we're going to assemble with our panel here, and then we'll go over in some detail how this coordination and collaboration is going to take place to make sure that our ports can handle the cargo that's coming our way.
Delivery from the foreign production factory to the domestic retail establishment relies upon goods movement from shore to ship, across the ocean, and then onto another shore. Ultimately, the disembarked cargo travels overland to the final destination. This intermodal movement entails a mixture of timing, scheduling, logistics, technology, and labor. As the cargo volume grows, the likelihood for delays, errors, and congestion also increases accordingly. When analyzing the competitive transport of products from creation to consumption, efficiency experts discuss the concepts of cost reduction, speed of throughput, automation, cargo consolidation, environmental impact, and infrastructure capacity. In the end, all of these concepts are subsets of two ubiquitous words: containers and innovation. Long before there was a modern world trade industry, ancient philosophers contemplated the essence of what today we call efficiency. Plato, Aristotle, and later St. Thomas Aquinas all ruminated about the relationship between what was "the potential" to what was "the actual." Perhaps had there been cargo containers in the time of Rene Descartes, he may have modified his famous statement proving self-existence. In that case, he might have stated, "I think, therefore, I can." Knowing the challenges preventing the efficient movement of containers in the modern world, today's business philosophers embrace the theory of innovation as the all-encompassing solution. Whereas containers represent the actual object, the value of innovation is the promise of potential yet to be achieved. Based on this notion of moving from "the actual" to "the potential," supply chain optimization groups associated with the local ports are studying obstacles that need to be overcome for the San Pedro Bay and affiliated areas. It is hoped that these studies will identify opportunities where information can be shared and cooperation can be encouraged across the industry. The goal is to move as many containers as possible, as quickly as possible, with the least amount of congestion and environmental impact. Efficiency considerations include the following questions: How does the San Pedro Bay compare with competitors on the West Coast and overseas, where various applications of automation are utilized to move containers rapidly with maximum cost savings? Should the local harbor be compared with high-tech Chinese and European harbors as part of the quest for greater efficiency? Are the various local appointment systems for container retrieval working as intended? Is it possible to create a cooperative harbor-wide, uniform appointment system that benefits everyone?
An appointment system's success really depends on people buying into it. So the MTOs need to be confident that they will save money and time, and the trucker will actually be there. So the MTO is always worried about, will the trucker be there? The trucker has no interest in an appointment system unless it saves him or her time, and that trucker can trust that it will actually happen. So what's really, really critical here is launching a system-wide program where it works from the beginning.
Assuming that efficiency can be gained by applying the best practices of competitors in regard to day-to-day marine terminal operations, there are also policy implications and external factors that need to be considered. For example, is there too much free time allowed for containers in the marine terminals? How does this courtesy contribute to congestion? Are beneficial cargo owners willing and prepared to move their containers out of the terminals in a timely manner?
To my sense is that you have some, some are ready to pick it up, they want it, and they're going to move it quickly. There's another segment of the customers and the BCOs that maybe not so much so. They want extended free time, they might have extended free time. They might not have extended free time, they just pay the demerch, you know, the charges that go into place when you extend your free time. So some customers are doing that. You know, why that is, it could be that maybe they've, you know, they don't need a product, you know, that's come in at the time that's coming in, and they might want to wait for a week or so before they bring it in. They might have congestion within their distribution centers, things of that nature. It could be a multitude of reasons, but there are definitely two segments of customers, those that are moving it fairly quickly and those that not so much.
There are considerations about container congestion that should occur at the origin of ship loading. A streamlining process could involve more strategic planning before containers are stacked onto the mega-ships in the Far East. Accordingly, can the ocean carriers plan more efficiently at the ports of origin so that not only are the rail-bound containers placed on top, but also the local delivery import containers are block-stowed together?
So yes, it was a big, big issue, and when we formed the Supply Chain Optimization Group, one of the first things we tackled was block-stow as a core issue. And the ocean carriers have, in fact, been working and cooperating on this, and it's certainly high on their list. But the challenge is always now with these alliances and with these alliance partners working together operationally, they really have to engage a whole new level of discipline and cooperation among the different ocean carriers to make it happen. So it is improving. We're now seeing a better mix. Certainly, they are able to do it. It takes more thought, more planning, and it takes a priority to make that happen. But yes, it can happen, and it is beginning to happen.
Can the expansion of on-dock rail and near-dock rail facilities in the L.A. Long Beach harbor make a real difference in getting containers to discretionary cargo owners in a faster timeframe?
The Port of Los Angeles has the best on-dock rail network in the United States. With the completion of the TradePAC on-dock rail later this year, all our terminals will offer on-dock rail service, which is a strong selling point. We continue to evaluate our current on-dock rail capabilities and look for opportunities to expand our current on-dock rail to accommodate growth. At YTI, we're adding additional loading tracks, and studies are underway to increase the capacity at WBCT and APMT. On-dock rail plays a significant role in our future success and competitiveness for U.S. inland markets. On-dock and near-dock rail will also provide the port with more cargo throughput as more pressure is placed in the coming years to reduce drainage congestion and emissions on our roadways.
Ultimately, the mega-ships will bring with them many thousands of containers at a time, forcing periodic surges of containers from fewer ships as opposed to steady streams of containers from more of the smaller ships. In this scenario, how can the local terminals in the San Pedro Bay smooth out the surges of mega-ship deliveries in ways that don't jam the freeways or fill up the terminal stacking space in large spurts? Does the harbor area need to increase the number of yards used as weigh stations for containers which have been placed on chassis? Is the infrastructure outside the terminal gates sufficient to handle the surges of containers that come with the mega-ship deliveries? What can be done about infrastructure problems in the short term and the long term?
Obviously, we need highway capacity to handle the truck volumes. And we proposed in the regional transportation plan for the region about 600 land miles of exclusive truckways, where trucks will actually have their own lanes, will be toll facility, will be clean facility. Trucks will be using their own lanes to get from A to B. That's good in many fronts. One is improve speeds for the trucks, the movement of goods, but two, it's also frees capacity for the passenger vehicles, because trucks will be moving to the exclusive truck lanes. This type of infrastructure is costly, and the estimates for the 600 land miles is about $23 billion.
Another component to the local goods movement industry is the impact it has on the quality of life in the local community. In addition to the quality of life questions, is the state and federal concern about the harbor's carbon footprint? An ambitious California regulatory mandate of zero emissions for the San Pedro Bay goods movement industry will impact the possibility of growth in cargo and jobs. As such, are environmental regulations requiring strict adherence to ambitious emissions reductions creating unintended consequences for the goods movement industry of Southern California? How can public health concerns and related carbon footprint considerations coexist with cargo growth?
When you look at how to control the emissions, yes, you need to look at it in phases. It's not all going to happen overnight. And you can't say, okay, you reduced yesterday this much, so tomorrow you have to reduce that much. You have to look at what is feasible, what's cost-effective, you have to look at the effect on the economy, on jobs. If you over-regulate, if you do something that's impossible, you could be shutting down an industry. So you have to set realistic goals, and then you have to allow some time for the technology to catch up. Sometimes it's just a matter of there's no technology out there to obtain the emission reductions that you want.
These and other issues will need to be addressed if the Southern California goods movement industry is to continue to grow and thrive in the future. The local economy is at risk, as are thousands of jobs related to international trade. Innovation in business operations and adopting the best practices of successful competitors will place the San Pedro Bay in a stronger position to meet the challenges of a dynamic global trade system. In the near future, stakeholders in the local harbor will have the opportunity to turn the potential into the actual, in whatever form that may take.
Fantastic film there, Tom. Okay, if I could invite our panelists up here, please? Okay. The biographies of our panelists are in the program there, so please read them over, but I'm just going to give a one-sentence introduction. We have Paul Trainey here, president of ILWU Local 63 Marine Clerks. I think he's, he brought his cheering section with him, that's fantastic. We have Steve Miller, chief procurement officer for PF Chang's. Another cheering section. Okay. Fred Joring, president of Golden State Express Logistics, and also a very active member of the Harbor Trucking Association and chairman. Very good, excellent. We're going to have a fun time tonight, I can see. Mike Christensen, Senior Executive Lead, Supply Chain Optimization, Port of Long Beach. And Tracy Burden, Director of Client Services at Use and Terminals. Okay, let's get started. Mike, we saw on the film here a mention of the supply chain optimization effort that the ports are engaged in. Could you tell us a little bit more about that, what its goals are, what you've achieved so far, and where the end game is?
Sure, Bill. But let me start out by adding my tribute to Dominic Moretti, and he, in my time in particular, the past decade at the, between the two ports, was a great, great friend and a great helper. And now I know one of the reasons why is because I share the same last name as his daughter. So that mystery is now solved. Dominic's a great guy. I've spent about a decade working for one port authority or the other, and one of the things I like to characterize the relationships between the ports is we're kind of like siblings. You know, we like to poke each other in the eye, we steal each other's people and customers and cargo. But when threats come to the family, we have had a history of banding together and doing stuff together to help out. And that goes back decades. In more recent times, when the environmental issues really threatened, brought us kind of to a standstill in terms of development, we came together on that. So when we started to see, and things were sailing nicely right up until about 2008, but after the Great Recession, our whole world changed. And we started to see a need to once again come together as ports, and so various things happened. There was, there were some efforts upon the ocean carriers' divestiture of the chassis of the ports, working with the intermodal equipment providers to come together and try to get a solution to that. And then when things really started backing up with the big ships and some of the other impacts, the ports decided it was really necessary to take a look at our role in the entire gateway supply chain. What could we do as port authorities to affect some positive change in the way that goods move through? So we, our then-brand-new chief executives got together and started scratching their heads. Of course, we can't, as competing port authorities, get into detailed discussions about this without some kind of antitrust immunity. So we put together an agreement that went to the Federal Maritime Commission, which very quickly, blisteringly fast, approved that agreement. And almost exactly one year ago this month, the ports' executive staff started meeting together and charting a course for what can we do as port authorities? And then we started out with a meeting last April of over 100 stakeholders. Virtually every part of the supply chain of the entire San Pedro Bay met together in the Long Beach City Council chambers and started a listen, we started a listening session. We then formed some working groups, initially aimed at trying to find ways to get through last year's peak season, and then getting, passing the baton on to some more working groups that allowed us to take a deep dive into some of the causes and some of the possible solutions. And I'd like to thank those of you, many of you in the rooms, that have taken a lot of your own personal time out to join these working groups and to start this collaboration, because it's this broader family, which is the marine container supply chain using the San Pedro Bay gateway, has pulled together. We are talking to each other, and we are seeing some very interesting things coming from this discussion.
Thanks, Mike. Fred, you're Fred, you're actively involved in the harbor. Your trucks are there every day. Are you noticing from the supply chain optimization efforts that some of these silos that Mike was alluding to are starting to break down, that the terminal operators, the BCOs, the shipping lines are listening to what the truckers have to say, and they're taking your concerns very seriously?
Well, I can say, Bill, that we've seen a lot more cooperation and communication with the terminals in the past several years than I've ever seen in our history. And the terminals that are working with us are paving a path to making the transition in and out of the terminal a whole lot easier, easier to understand, hasn't solved everything, but it has helped a ton being able to communicate with terminals that are working closely with us.
Thanks, Fred. Paul, the ILWU is an integral part of the entire harbor. I mean, your folks are there every day. They're the ones who are actually handling the cargo. From your observations as to how the big ships now are affecting the terminals, what can you say about the need for collaboration among all of the stakeholders? And specifically, what does the ILWU have to contribute to this effort?
The big ships coming into our ports now is like me trying to stick one more piece of furniture in my garage. So, and I don't think my wife's here, so she didn't hear me. But I'll tell you, when the Benjamin Franklin came in, it was gratifying to see and to be a part of the groups of discussion, the preparation to succeed with having the Benjamin Franklin here. But I'll tell you, the key, if we had another big ship right behind the Benjamin Franklin, there could have been an issue because there's only so much land that we can use. There's only so much land that we have. So getting the cargo out as fast as possible, pushing the cargo out, whether it's through trucking or through rail, is the key. The utilization of space is the key to handle these big vessels that are coming in.
Thanks, Paul. Tracy, you work closely with the ILWU at the terminal. You haven't had the Benjamin Franklin-sized ship yet, but you are handling mega-ships. What kind of dynamics are you trying to foster there at your terminal to make sure that this cargo is, as Paul indicated, being pushed out rather than sitting there?
Sure. Well, it really leads down to collaboration, not only with our external customers, the BCOs, steamship lines, and drayage companies that Fred mentioned, but also with the ILWU. They're not only worried about the bigger ships coming to the docks, they're working with the mid-sized terminals like Use and Terminals. We're sitting down with them, sitting across the table and trying to figure out these solutions together. I think that's a critical part of our operation. So when we talk about collaborating with our external partners, when I say "we," we're always talking about the ILWU and our port authorities. So it's really important that we have a partnership with the ILWU daily. That leads to some of the peel-off operations we can do. We can reach out to the drayage companies as well as the BCOs and work directly with them. Historically, we just worked with the steamship lines. In the last few years, we found a lot of benefit out of just going, meeting the BCOs, working with multiple customers. As you guys know, there's a lot of alliances out there. So now we can hit the BCO up and get a bigger bang for the buck, so to speak, on a peel-off operation or a free-flow program. And not only with the external customers here in the U.S., we can also reach to the Far East and make sure, it was touched on in the video, that they stow, get the stow density correct on the ship so we can perform those operations and expedite the cargo. That's really important for us. I think the next step moving forward is to know when the cargo is going to come off. Right now, the people at this table will know when the cargo is available, when it hits the ground. We want to be able to move beyond that and be able to forecast three, four days before the ship gets there on when that cargo is going to be off. It's up to the terminals whether they make appointments for that, but we know, we have planning systems. We have our terminal operating systems. We need to integrate the systems together and then show it outwardly to the drayage community so we can show that, you know, when the cargo is going to be projected, be available and expedite the cargo. That way, there's more planning involved. We did a trial for about five weeks, and it was very successful, but now we need to get some system integration. And we're not the only terminal working on that, but we see that as a bright spot moving forward.
Thanks, Tracy. Steve, until recently, the...
You have the mic from there.
You have to talk loudly. Oh, there you go. Leave it to a trucker to always come up with a solution. Steve, until recently, I think at many ports, the BCO, the beneficial cargo owner, was kind of, you know, absent. But we've seen more and more now that the cargo owners are becoming a very active player in ensuring that their cargo is handled rapidly. And you're working with the other stakeholders in the supply chain to make sure that that happens. Could you explain life from your perspective?
Sure, sure. I can talk a little bit about that. You witnessed a little bit of it right here. I just want my stuff, and you got it to me. So, you know, as an end customer, you know, we're dedicated to pleasing either the people in the restaurants or the people in the stores that we need to service, our customers and our guests. And I think over just probably the last five years, as we've been better at managing massive amounts of data, and you can't go a day without reading something about that, we're starting to get the analytical tools to really understand what's going on. Where before, from a sales perspective, really, if you wanted to really understand how you were going to adjust for seasonal sales, you went down to the logistics department and you asked them what happened last Christmas, and they could tell you, and that would help you plan. Now we have data that sometimes we only have access to, that we can share. And we can collaborate from that standpoint across the supply chain and get insights into data that others can share that we don't have access to and talk about what kind of behaviors are hitting us. In an environment where our shareholders and our CFOs are very focused on risk management, understanding the flow and the flow that's going to be consistent, and the assurances that we're not going to have people show up in the restaurants and not have any shrimp, or be told, you know, come back January 15th and you'll be able to get that blouse. Those kinds of things just don't work. And I think the changes that have already been alluded to and were alluded to, I think, in the last couple of town halls, you're seeing a change in people's willingness to work together, at least put issues aside for a little while and talk about how do we all get better. It's very refreshing.
Thanks. Fred? The Harbor Trucking Association has been actively involved, not only in the stakeholder groups, but in gathering metrics. And can you explain a little bit about your effort and especially the Turn Time 2.0 study that HTA has been working on?
That we've been teasing everybody about?
Yes.
Absolutely. We've been studying, we've had about 1,500 trucks measuring the GPS movement of those trucks for the last two years. So we've got a pretty good track record of what's going on at the various terminals. Now, there's still some debates about what is a turn time, and we're going to get to that, particularly as we get into TMD, what we call TMD 2.0. We've just signed a contract with another provider that's going to take this to a new level. Today, we measure it and gather the information and publish it every month, terminal by terminal, the time inside the gate, the time outside the gate. We're going to take that to the next step. We're going to make that live and be able, enable the users, whether it's whoever subscribes as far as that goes, to be able to look at a terminal and say, like for Tracy, Tracy's average is, what, 73 minutes? And look at the outliers, or look at the number of visits that are at that terminal, click on a move and say, and Tracy can say, why was this guy here six hours? Click on it, and it'll give him his breadcrumb trail of what he did in that terminal, even if it was last night, so we can fix problems or identify problems right away. If we see that there's a place in the terminal where the drivers go to hide, shame on all of us. And we're going to have to depend on the terminals to help us with that. But it is in nobody's best interest to not get in and out of that terminal quickly. Our goal, of course, is 60 minutes. We've got to get where we can get more than two round trips a day out of these trucks. We have a goal. We have a goal of so many dollars, it takes so many dollars to run a truck for a shift. And if you get that goal by going two turns, it's one number. If you go four turns, it's half that number. So what we're doing by slowing up the transition time or the transaction time is increasing the cost of landing cargo here in our port, and that is in nobody's best interest. So we're looking forward to that. I looked at some of the data yesterday. We've got, so far, we've got about 700 trucks into this. It's going to require a whole different commitment on the part of the trucker because what we'll be able to see is our own trucks overlaid with the rest of the fleet to see what's going on and if our experience is the same as trucker XYZ at a particular terminal. If it's not, then you question, why not? Is it my drivers? Is it the way I'm dispatching? Is it the times? And we'll be able to look, hey, between 8:00 and 9:00 a.m., it's a 20-minute turn time. I ought to get my guys in there between 8:00 and 9:00 a.m. And maybe at noon, if I send them in at 11:59, guess what? They're going to set an hour. That doesn't make sense. So it gives evaluation tools to the trucker, to the terminals, to the ports, and eventually to other groups who want to look at how our infrastructure is really built. It's exciting. Good stuff.
Thanks, Fred. Tracy, the terminals in L.A. Long Beach announced late last year that you, I think, ultimately, like, at least 10 of the terminals will have mandatory appointment systems. Could you tell us why mandatory appointment systems, how that helps the terminal operator plan its needs for the day for labor and equipment, and then how, hopefully, it'll help the truckers have improved turn times?
Sure. I think the main thing is, we get a huge influx of truckers at certain parts of the shift, like Fred alluded to. You might have morning hours where nobody's coming in. So us participating in an appointment system, and we are one of the terminals that are going to create one, but we're going to take a little different approach. I think it was mentioned in the video about having one portal, main portal for the appointment system, so it's a lot easier for the drayage community to use. We'd like to build our system around the trucking community and the BCO's needs, and then that way, hopefully, it'll be a lot easier to use and be a... And also, we want to have a central portal. And what that'll do for the terminal, it'll even the flow of the cargo out, of course, and save us money and time of having machines standing by. I think to be in alignment with the turn time, like Fred said, it's going to, it helps everybody. We've been doing that for a couple of years now. We went from being 10th or 11th out of 13 terminals to the top four in the last 12 months. So just having that information is key for us and very valuable because we give it to our ILW clerks to monitor as well, so they can, they're part of the team to keep the flow going through the terminal. So it's exciting to get the appointment system and some of the information out there so that we can all share and see.
Thanks, Tracy. Mike, we heard on the film Ellen McCorkle alluded to extended free time for storing containers at the terminals, and the message there was, you know, you have too many containers sitting there for too long, it gums up the system, there are extra handles, it takes a lot of time, it causes congestion. Now, from your presentation, it sounds like both ports are becoming much more aggressive, even though you're still landlords. So what can you do in this new, you know, ports-on-steroids type of atmosphere to make sure that extended free time is not abused?
I think, as maybe you in the room will recall, a few months ago, the Port of Long Beach put out a proposal that we called flexible free time. And it was really aimed at the same thing. It's the phenomena that, you know, some of the, that it doesn't make sense to most of us that the most expensive and valuable real estate in the state of California could be used for a public storage warehouse. We recognize that a big segment of the cargo owners are trying to get their stuff off the docks quickly, but there is another segment of the business that is maxing out their free time and sometimes even negotiating extended free time. So we put this out there, and kind of in the spirit of cooperation, we took a lot of feedback from a lot of different parties. And certainly, there are concerns from different stakeholders over this. I'd say at this point, we're in an active dialogue. We're listening, we're having more discussions on it, but we think it's critical that this cargo moves. I mean, I thought, I think Mr. Trainey had mentioned the word "push," and one of the discussion points we have in our supply chain optimization groups is looking towards a system where the cargo is not being pulled out of the terminals but pushed out. And as we look down the road, we've just released, you know, some cargo forecasts. And if we expect to realize the full potential of this gateway and grow the way we think we can, we have to look at ways to become more fluid and ways to get cargo off the docks quicker. So this is just one step in that direction. Right now, it's in dialogue, but we're going to continue having that dialogue to where we can get that cargo moved more quickly and more reliably.
Thanks, Mike. Paul, we've already heard from Tracy about peel-offs, you know, and free flow, being able to put the cargo black, store it on the terminal, and then the trucks for predetermined BCOs will come in and just retrieve these containers in a peel-off type of fashion without having to go and hunt and pack all over the harbor. From your vantage point, right there on the docks, how does labor play into this? What role do you play in peel-off or dray-offs or all these other creative solutions? What do you contribute to the mix?
Well, as Marine Clerks, we provide an essential part of it. I think Tracy will agree that with communication and working together with Use and Terminals and with ILW, that we've been able to assist and help increase the turn times over Use and Terminals, not just with technology, but with human intervention to help, which I've been hearing is a key word with a lot of shippers, is efficiency, not to mention productivity and reliability, but efficiency. So the peel-offs, anything that Marine Clerks can assist with technology to make it more efficient, working down the docks for a lot of years, it's, the stuff that we discussed today isn't really new. It's been around, and we've talked about it since 2004, 2005, when we've had similar issues back then. And we've worked through them, and it's been cooperation with the ILW, Local 1394 and 63, along with, you know, partners with the terminal operators, that we've succeeded in overcoming these challenges. And it's nice, it's nice from a union standpoint, from a labor standpoint, to be included in dialogue and not just treated as if you're the labor, you're just going to work as directed. It's nice to bring in years of experience from people that's been on the docks. I know when I started in, my family's union, but I started down here in management, and I know the management role, and it's really nice, it's a feeling of accomplishment when you can go to the job and work hand-in-hand overcoming obstacles and overcoming challenges and meeting challenges. And I'll tell you the truth, watching the Benjamin Franklin sail and knowing that you're a part of that, it's a good feeling, and it's a good feeling from a labor standpoint. But anyways, getting back to, I got carried away there. I got a little soapbox.
No, no, I was enjoying that.
Where's my cheering section now? But anyways, getting back to that, I think that the, working together with the technology and being the human element there to help the efficiency is huge.
Thanks, Paul. Steve, how are BCOs using technology in the supply chain as far as, I mean, you all have to have cargo cleared through customs, you, you know, you have your purchase orders, everything has to be filed electronically. Have BCOs advanced a lot in their use of information technology to improve the supply chain?
Well, I think so. I think it's more reliable as well. So in some cases, we've had a lot of the data that said cargo was in one place and it really was somewhere else, based on the way people check in and check out or don't check in and check out, whether it's an administrative process or whether it's really a logistical process. And I think technology's allowed us to get closer to the activity and the activity flow of the cargo, as well as knowing where the cargo is when it starts. Um, all the way back to when it leaves a factory, wherever the factory may be. And then all the way to where it is on the ship, uh, and then when it's projected to come off. And, um, I, I think, um, it, so customs has gotten a good rap and a bad rap at different times. But I think they've come a tremendous distance in terms of, um, clarity of information, knowing what you need to provide, how you need to provide it. And, and frankly, um, for those that leave their containers around a little while and aren't ready to pick it up, I kind of want them to be charged. Because I don't want to be carrying that load for the inefficiencies that are happening in the ports. And if that information flow, as, as it continues to get better and better, enables us to be there on time, to pick up, know when the container's going to be available and be able to take it away, um, the people that should be paying that burden of having it around should be the people that aren't there to pick up their cargo.
Thanks, Steve. And, um, you know, we invite questions. Uh, we're kind of running way behind our, uh, time here, but, but that's okay. So, um, i- if you have any questions, uh, is there a microphone? Pardon me? Oh, okay. Uh, see, I'm in logistics. Okay, uh, here we go. So, uh, feel free to, to, you know, use the microphone on, on either side here. And, and don't be shy. Uh, we, we certainly invite your questions. We want this to be an open dialogue. Uh, and then, uh, in the meantime, while somebody, if nobody comes up immediately, Paul, when I get back to you, uh, we hear a lot about automation. And, um, I think we're seeing from the experience in Europe, the automated terminals there. We're seeing a lot of successes and we're seeing some, some issues. Uh, and especially with the productivity levels, uh, um, we are not seeing the productivity levels yet that automation, um, promises. And yet, we have two terminals in Southern California. TRAPAC has already embarked on its automation, uh, program. And Middle Harbor and Long Beach, uh, will, oh, go live next, uh, month. So, um, what's the ILWU's view on automation and, and, you know, do you support it?
Well, automation, if it takes the place of a, of a, of a job, then I don't support it in that way. But, um, as far as, as far, I'll tell you what. When I started down here, we didn't have technology. When I started down here, we didn't have some of the, the automatic locking cones that when a container snaps onto another container, it automatically locks. You don't have to send anybody up there to, to lock it or to unlock it. We didn't have twin 20-foot spreader beams, which picks up two 20-footers at the same time. And LBCTs introducing a tandem spreader, which would pick up, uh, four 20s at the same time. We didn't have, we didn't have those luxuries. We didn't have the technology. But vessel productivity back in the early 90s was, was as good, if not better, than it is right now with technology. So I, again, I, I stress, technology is great. It, it's assists and it helps. But without human intervention, if you really want efficiency, I, I feel that, that with human intervention along with technologies, we're really going to see efficiency, productivity, and reliability. And, um, with LBCT opening up, we will, we shall see. We shall see what that brings forth. But I'm, I'm hoping that, um, with these government incentive programs, that maybe that they take that, those millions of dollars and, and they use it as incentive programs, maybe to, to help terminal operators and assist them in, in holding 24-hour gates. Or, um, I mean, I, it's, it's, it's sad that my grocery store has better hours than the LA Long Beach Harbor. So, I think if we really want to get cargo out of there, which we're going to need to. The alliance is a great thing for the steamship lines, but the alliance on the terminals is just basically, you're using up more area to store alliance cargo. You've got, instead of one shipping line, you've got six or seven. And you got to sort their empties on that dock. Instead of sorting 20s and 45-footers in one area, and those are the empties, now you're sorting 20s and 45s times six across that yard. And we're loading back in those blocks. So utilizing that space, again, is going to be important. We, we just need to push that cargo out to reutilize that space. So 24-hour gates is, is huge to help assist get this cargo out that gate. And again, I hope that the government money will, uh, be an incentive program for something like that.
Thanks, Paul. And we have a question over here?
Yeah, my name is, uh, John. Work for a BCO, um, more or less manage our drayage providers. My question's for, uh, Tracy and possibly Fred. Um, you talked about one single appointment system for all the terminals. How feasible do you think that is? And when do you think that would go online?
I think it's, it's definitely feasible. We've talked about it. It may be, could be 13 different appointment systems with an overlay of a system on top of it, like you'd see on Expedia. Uh, people have referred to that system. That most likely, there will be something like that, because there's already five or six appointment systems out there. I think in the next couple of years, I don't think it's going to happen quickly this year. I think everybody will come up and come and get their own appointment systems. But until you get them all together and get an overlay that can communicate with all of them, I don't think it's going to happen real quick. But I think it's definitely in the, in the making.
Thank you. We have a question here?
Hi, I, I have a question for Paul. Uh, I know that you're concerned about optimization and reduction of jobs for the ICW. But don't you think in the last couple of years that optimization has been implemented at the ports? The reducing accidents have been increased tremendously, reduced. And also, I think it's an opportunity to the ICW workers, you know, to learn new, um, challenges when using automatic equipment. So, and they would be more prepared. And I think, like you said, efficiencies were good at one point, but, uh, preparing the ICW workers to be using the automatization, electronics, and all computerized systems, I think that will lead to the next level to all the ICW workers and more opportunities for them to grow.
Training is really important. And if I heard you correctly, you're talking about, um, um, accidents on the job. Training first, we're, we're having discussions with, um, with Pacific Maritime Association right now with training programs. I think it's really important as technology comes in and we have a membership that needs to be fluent in that technology. That training is, is huge and we're going through that process right now. Um, as far as accidents on the job, um, e- efficiency? I'm trying to word this correctly, so I don't offend anybody. Efficiency is important. If you, if you have, if we don't have infrastructure and if we don't have, um, terminal operators that continue to do infrastructure in the yards, and we have, um, we have chaos in the yards. And chaos is going to lead to accidents. And, and we, we, we experienced an accident today. Um, I'm sure that everyone's aware of. We, we, um, we lost one of our members today due to an accident. And I'm not saying that chaos was a part of it. I'm not saying that frustrations about getting containers out the gate was, was, uh, part of it. But I knew, though, I do know that from working down there, um, that without efficiency frustrations build up because they want to get cargo out of there. They want to get the extra move. And, uh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and, um, it's just, uh, I'll, I'll just leave it at that. Frustrations lead to chaos. Chaos leads to accidents. It was very tough today, talking to a daughter to tell her her father passed away.
Thank you, Paul. Yes?
Hello, my name is Mario Morrow, and I just had a question for, uh, Paul. Uh, kind of would you run off of, uh, how you want to get, uh, union workers and, um, you're, I guess you guys are competing with technology as well? What are some things that are, um, at, at your part that you would consider in making, uh, I guess, the workers more competitive with technology? Because I mean, living in the 21st century, you know, you have, uh, we have advanced computer systems, mechanics. So what's going to, like, in 10 years, what's going to make, I guess, uh, the labor force more competitive with technology?
The way we use the technology, the way we use it to be more efficient. We, we have to, again, I'm going to talk about the, the, the 24-hour gate. We have to look at, if we want to be competitive, um, you know, I've been to a few round tables now. And, and I've heard that, uh, within the top 10 shippers, that they talk about maybe taking some of their containers to other ports, uh, even to our, our brothers up north into Canada. So you have to look at what's going on over there. How are they using it? What are they doing that we're not doing? And a part of it is, is the 24-hour gates. They're, they're pushing that cargo out. And if they're going to offer that to the shipper and say, hey, this is what we have to offer, then, then we, we need to do the same thing. We need to do the same thing to keep cargo here. So we need to use technology to help us be more efficient. But I don't want to get into robotics to take our, to take work away. I, I don't want to do that. I, I'd rather spend, I'd rather spend, it's, that money, like I says, as an incentive program for terminal operators to assist them and to be more efficient. And even dockwork, to segregating cargo, uh, if, if we get, if that yard gets packed, like I mentioned earlier about getting another piece of furniture in my garage, i- if, if we get that cargo off and it sits there and it doesn't go out, that next vessel comes in, that cargo, that cargo goes right in front of it. So how do we get that cargo in the back? We, we got to get that cargo that's in front of it. And that's just, that's brand-new cargo. So if we got the shrimp, the shrimp's out there in the, in the back of that row, I don't know when we're going to get that shrimp out there. But, but.
Sale on shrimp.
Yeah, it's going to be a big sale on shrimp. But, um, if, but we want to be competitive, those are, those are the areas that we need to work on to be competitive, to keep the cargo here.
Thank you. Uh, Tracy, uh, since we're on, oh, what, yeah, okay.
Yeah, just, um, just to add a li- a little bit, you know, anybody that, that watched the automotive industry and some of the things that had gone, gone through the automotive industry in the last 30 years, you've seen factories that have had lots of robots that couldn't get a car out. Um, and you saw a factory up in Fremont, California, that used the exact same workforce going from one management team to another and went from the worst quality to the best quality in the company, uh, without automation, without additional automation. But you look at factories today and there's automation doing all kinds of jobs that it didn't use to do before. In some cases, eliminating jobs where people used to get hurt. People used to have repetitive, uh, injuries. And then areas where it's just making the quality better. So, um, man, I don't, I, I think the points up here were great. It's, it's not, um, technology or not technology, and applying technology doesn't make us more efficient. Um, it's the right application that's ready to be applied and applied in the right way that provides a safe environment that I think is the most important technology that we move forward on.
Thanks. And I know we have a question here, but I wanted to follow real quickly on the 24/7, um, issue with Tracy. I mean, it's feasible. I mean, we could have three eight-hour shifts, but that's not the way the contract is set up now. The third shift is a hoot gate and, uh, hoot shift, and it's, uh, five hours. So what has to be done realistically to have three eight-hour shifts and, and work round the clock?
I think that would just lead to collaboration with the unions, sitting down with them and, and coming up with a scheme to make that happen. Currently with the, the hoot shift, like you mentioned, with the five hours, it's, it's not as productive for a gate because a lot of trucks are laying down or waiting for the next shift. And by the time you really get rolling very well with all your equipment and, and everybody gets in good tune, uh, the shift's almost over. So I think it's going to take a, a collaboration with the unions and the terminal operators to, to make that happen.
Okay, thanks, Tracy. Um, and, okay, we have a question here?
Hi, my name's Deana Hook, and I'm with the GLS program here at Cal State Long Beach. My question is that, um, it's actually from Michael Christensen. Um, space seems to be the main issue, uh, real estate. Are there any plans to expand the terminal size or anything like that?
Um, I'm sorry, the first part of your question was again?
Um, part, space seems to be an issue, seems to be one of the main issues, um, which creates congestion and things like that. Are there any plans to expand ports or to make it bigger?
Um, making the port bigger is a, is a, is a real challenge. That really means, uh, either buying property, uh, on the hinterland side, which is not, probably not very likely, or creating more land out of water, which again, is a, is become extraordinarily expensive. I think what we're, we're, we're trying to do is, uh, in fact, we're just embarking right now at the Port of Long Beach on a, on a major land use study. And we're asking ourselves that same question. What do we want to do with the property we have? What can be done with the property to make it more productive? I think to what, to Paul's point, you know, the need to, uh, to refresh the infrastructure to be sure that the terminals have the configurations that they need. We have a lot of terminals that are getting, getting, uh, a little bit aged. Uh, and we need to work with those terminal operators, the, the people who hold leases for those terminals, and see what can be done to rationalize them and to optimize their configurations. We also have to remember that the terminals are plugged into an inland transportation network. And as you can see, as the Gerald Desmond Bridge goes up, you know, that was a project that was critical to keeping goods moving, uh, efficiently. And honestly, we had to take that project on in order to get it done in the timeframe we needed. And we're seeing that occur more and more often. And when we can do that to the rail system, we have a billion dollars worth of rail improvements at the Port of Long Beach. When we can do that, we can leverage the existing land that we have and make it more productive. And then as we go with some more of these practices, whether it be, uh, more efficient gates, maybe longer, uh, more, more gate shifts perhaps, better ways of getting the cargo off, the peel piles and this sort of thing. We can take this existing property and make it more productive. So I think rather than creating more land, we'd like to look at ways to make the land more productive.
And Mike, if we could follow up on that same point, uh, we're seeing some examples of this rationalization that you talked about. Uh, Oakland, a couple of years ago, in Middle Harbor, there had three 100-acre terminals and three different terminal operators. Now, SSA Marine operates the entire 300. Um, that was kind of a business decision because the APL and, um, Hanjin terminals weren't making money. Uh, and we're seeing in the Pacific Northwest now, the two ports have got together under the Northwest Alliance. They have nine, um, international terminals and, uh, they're saying they'll probably end up with four. Do you see that type of consolidation happening here where, instead of having 13 terminals of various sizes, we have fewer but larger terminals, maybe more rectangularly shaped, that, you know, would improve efficiency?
You know, we watch, uh, those developments in other ports in the world very closely, particularly on the West Coast. And I'm somewhat familiar with the evolution of it. Oakland having in a prior life done a lot of work for them. Uh, at this point, I, I don't know that I can comment on that. And there's no real plans to change from 13, the 13 terminals. If you look at the structures of their leases, they're, uh, under long-term leases. And, uh, they're all unique, uh, in their different ways. And they've all adapted to some, um, to the different configurations they have. So at this point, I'd say we're probably not looking at following that pattern. We're choosing to work more closely with, uh, with the terminals that we have and figuring out ways to optimize the property that they have currently.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Yes, sorry.
My name is Norman Harris. I'm the president of the Los Angeles Customs Brokers and Freightful Orders Association. I wanted to ask you about a concept that I saw recently, uh, and this is open to anyone. Uh, valet service where the terminal is notified prior to the arrival of the, um, vessel for certain containers to be put in a pile and then removed as soon as they're available and to be picked up at an, uh, off-terminal site. Any thoughts on that?
I, I, it's a great idea. I think, uh, SSA and the Port of LA Long Beach, or Long Beach, actually does that now to, uh, shipper's transport another yard off dock. And I think it just comes down to partnerships with, um, and getting more land, uh, somewhere off-site that you can do that operation. It's very successful. Either that or valet on your own property with expectations of, of collaborating with the drayage community, to have them there at a certain time to really evacuate that cargo. That's, that's an idea as well, which we've thought of, but it, it does take a lot of space. It's a lot of timing issues involved.
Uh, Mike, have the ports identified any vacant lots, plots, uh, terminals that maybe won't become container terminals like PRS that could be used for drayoff?
Well, as you probably were, there was a period of time last year where we were using PRS to help support the recovery from the disruptions of last year. Uh, we ran that, uh, as long as we could without, uh, exceeding our environmental clearance. We're now looking at what can be done on that. I know our neighbors at Los Angeles have a parcel that they're looking at, the old LAXT site, and actually went as far as go, putting an RFP out, uh, to, uh, parties to determine what could be done that would support the marine terminals. And, uh, so, you know, there is a limit to the property that's out there. Certainly, uh, we're looking what to do, you know, whether PRS or any other parcel we might have access to could be utilized for that. Nothing we can really report at this time on that.
Thanks, Mike. We have a question over here?
Hi, my name is Carl Kemp. I'm with the Pacific Merchant Shipping Association. First, I want to thank the organizers for putting this together. And also want to give a shout out to Commissioner Dinesh from the Port of Long Beach here, our commissioner from the Port of Long Beach. I know all of you saw the breaking news and would just like to get a response, if you have it, to, uh, the SKIG decision and, um, the judge's ruling that, uh, the project needs to do more environmental review before it proceeds and how that might impact congestion.
Mike, that sounds like a...
Elizabeth Warren told me to ask that question.
Elizabeth, what's your answer?
I don't know the answer.
No, it's, it's a perfectly legitimate question, it's breaking news, so, Mike, I guess by default...
Thank you Carl.
I mean, it's Long Beach that, that, you know, filed the suit, or at least is the main litigant.
Well, you know, I've, I've changed hats, so I gotta be sure I'm wearing the correct hat right now. Yeah, we were, we, we saw, we're still kind of digesting the decision that came down. We don't know what the next move will be. We are, the litigation was holding up some planning at Long Beach that we were wanting to move forward with, and we're hoping that this will allow us to move forward with some very important projects, particularly rail projects, now that a decision was rendered. So I think that would be the answer, is, is we hope now that we're gonna be able to move forward, at least with the projects that are on our, our books, that are so critical on the rail side, that are so critical to, to our, optimizing our supply chain.
Very good answer. Tom, how are we doing on time? I don't know...
Take it to 7:55.
7:55? Okay, we, we, we have eight minutes, so let's, let's keep the party going here.
Did you realize that we had to walk all the way up there?
No, we can hear you.
My question for Paul, hi, it's Mike Johnson here, Harbor Truck Association.
Hi Mike.
I've been talking of 24-hour gates for quite a while, and as is mentioned here tonight, there's several obstacles, one of them being the shorter shift. Would you be able to work something with your members to negotiate something on that third shift, so we can go closer to 24-hour gates?
Negotiating like we're gonna have the power to man it? Guarantee ya, for sure.
Adjusting the hours so we could get three eights in there?
Beyond my, beyond my title, adjusting the hours. But I'll tell you this, I'll tell you this, that not only just 24/7 gates on the Houdal, which by the way, we used to do years ago, we'd just push it out, push it out during that Houdal shift, and then we reutilized that space again for the following day to put cargo back in that space, utilizing the space for efficiency. But it's not just the, the Houdal gate, it's just if we can get the incentive program to keep the gates open, let's just say, longer than Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday on the second shift, maybe go into a Thursday, Friday on the second shift. So you're looking at Monday through Friday, gate operation, second shift, six o'clock to, five or six o'clock to 0300 in the morning, now, and also the Monday through Friday, as well as Saturday day-side gates. So that's, that's, so don't just limit it to, and just limit it to the Houdal gate, but I hear what you're saying.
And Tracy?
No, I agree, I mean, Paul, Paul mentioned that the labor's ready. We can be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but just a matter of when that would happen, or why it would happen. If it was gonna be, it would have to be beneficial for the terminal operators, to be honest, and we'd have to see a flow during all the hours. If we opened seven days a week and there's, you know, enough movement...
Which leads me to my second question, because I know you need another one.
Excellent, thank you Mike.
Fred, with the new TMD2 coming on, and Tracy with the appointment system, how can those two systems work together if we don't know from one terminal to the next what the other one is doing? How would those, how would those appointments work? Fred, this is you.
This is me. Well, first of all, first of all, the trucking industry supports the appointment systems as long as it's, it's paired with a commitment to get us to 60-minute turn times. Now, 60 minutes sounds like a big commitment, but remember, when, when Alan Lowenthal put in the bill to, that basically created PierPass, we were concerned about 30-minute turn times, and it hasn't been that long ago. So asking for 60 minutes seems to be very reasonable. Now, how we, did you have another part of that question, Mike?
How would TMD2 work with an appointment system from a regional site, knowing what the other terminal is doing with your driver that has an appointment system?
Now, I think the other part of, I think the other part of the appointment system is, comes with a commitment to rework the PierPass structure. Because if you have, if you have an appointment system that meters the flow of the trucks over whether it's 16 hours or 24 hours, I don't care which, you don't have to incentivize people to come at night. The mirror appointment system creates incentive to come at night, and there's some very real benefits that the environment gets from that. Right now, we pull at night, deliver during the day, we take an empty back to the port during the day, bobtail back to the yard to grab our next load. Imagine, imagine the concept of being able to actually do a round trip with a truck and getting rid of those empty miles. So we think the appointment system has benefits, whether it's a 16-hour window, 24-hour window, Mike, and I think it becomes critical to, to metering the cargo in the long run. But I gotta, I've gotta say, we gotta have one portal, one portal to look at this. Right now, we go into 40-some portals to find out, to do our business with the terminals, the steamship lines, the chassis providers. It's unbelievable. And then even some of those portals are not up to date, and dispatchers have to email, or worse yet, call to find out the situation on where to return empties, for example. So we need to embrace some of the changes, some of the, some of the technologies that are out there. We need to throw money at them, bring them to, to our port, so we're not operating in a 1970s, 80s, 90s environment, as far as, as far as computerization's concerned. And I'm not talking about something that's, that's Star Wars. This is stuff that's, is easy, relatively easy to develop in this world.
Yeah, Mike, and I, I think the data that we get from the 2.0, along with our own system data, is gonna be able to help us set the thresholds for those appointment systems, so we can fill up that time. We don't want appointment system just to get people in the gate and have the same old story going on inside the gate. We want to be able to rotate them out, just as, well, and 60 minutes seems kinda long to me, but...
I like how he thinks.
But I think it'll definitely help, having, the more data, the better, for all of us.
Well, you know, one of the problems we have, one of the problems we have as an industry, and Tracy has this problem, drivers are sitting outside the gate, or they're hiding inside the terminal between shift changes. Oh my God, why are you hiding in the terminal? Because we don't, my customer doesn't want to pay PierPass. I don't want to pull that load out during PierPass hours, or, or somebody has to pay the 130, whatever dollars it is, and I've gotta wait till 6 o'clock to pull it out. Imagine, imagine being able to go into a harbor, a terminal, grabbing a container and leaving, and not having to queue up outside at 4 o'clock, or any other of the, the problems that you see by drivers not having something to do in between loads.
And maybe we could, okay, real quickly.
Just a quick question. The day shift is funded by the contracts between marine terminal operators and the merchant carriers. The second shift is funded by payments from VCOs during the day to compensate to run the second shift. There's a lot of talk about the third shift and about the appointments. Is the proposal that is being put out there that the appointment system, who is paying for the appointments to fund for all of these shifts?
Yeah Fred. Fred, yeah, that would be a good one.
Let me put it this way, he's paying for the inefficiency today. He's paying for waiting time in the harbor, he's paying increased trucking costs, because my truck can only get two turns out of the harbor to go to Compton, for crying out loud, a 20-minute drive, even with my car. And if we make the turn times more efficient, there is money to fund the night gates. Whether we do it through a port charge that spreads it among all the containers on a, at a container-to-time basis, trust me, the money is there. If we're averaging 93 minutes turn time in a, in all the harbors, every place, 93 minutes for a visit right now, that means if I give an hour free for every, every move a customer has, he's gonna pay an hour of waiting time. Now, we don't charge a market rate, or we don't charge a fully compensated rate for waiting time. I figure a truck cost is about 100 bucks an hour, and we don't charge that. But he's paying basically 100 bucks additional for every move to and from our port that could be eliminated if we can get to that point.
I, I would agree with that. I mean, we have Paul's group ready to deliver containers, it's a shame to see somebody come in for a single transaction when we have the labor sitting, standing by to do a duel. So it's, that's tough to see, and we are seeing a lot of that, the paradigm shift of people bringing back empties. Say, I know you need a load, he goes, no, I have to come back tonight, and then they leave the terminal, come back. It's not good for the environment, it's not good for efficiencies.
So the, the first time I met Mike was tonight, and it was pretty exciting to hear some of the stuff that is going on, and some of the things that, that we're working towards here. One of my favorite stories is the two guys that are sitting on the ground when they see a bear coming at them. The one guy jumps up and starts running, and the other guy starts putting his shoes on, or his running shoes on. And the guy looks at him, he goes, "You can't outrun that bear." And he goes, "I don't need to outrun that bear, I just need to outrun you." So, innovation, innovation can be a real pain in the butt. But as a, as, as a customer, I'm gonna go to the place that can get my cargo to be fast, and can get me at a price that allows me to not raise prices to the people that are buying my stuff. And it's great to hear some of the things that are going on here. Clearly, this is the place people want to bring cargo. The rail access, the speed, the quality of the workforce, it's just really, from our perspective anyway, it's, it's where you want to be, if you can afford to be here. And, and maybe it's 24 hours, but nobody's gonna buy shrimp from us, because, hey, it was delivered at 4:00 AM, right? It's, they're gonna buy it from us, because it's fresh, and it's at the right price. And so all of that kind of figures into it.
Okay, this was an excellent panel, we're gonna keep moving along, but let's give them all a big round of applause.
So thanks, before we, before we end, as, as custom, we always ask Dr. Jen Giuliano, the Met Trans Director and the Ferraro Chair and Effective Local Government at, at the Salt Price School of Public Policy at USC, to provide some concluding comments.
I have to talk fast before I lose the entire audience, right? First of all, I wanted to say that there isn't much to say, because I see this as kind of the kumbaya session. Having done this for a few years now, what, what I'm really impressed with is how far we in Southern California have come. If I were, you know, if we were to sort of go back to that 10th anniversary that we saw Dominic in, those were very different conversations, five or six or seven years ago, than the conversation that we heard tonight. And the conversation we heard tonight was all about communication, collaboration. I heard several people say, gosh, I'm really glad somebody's finally listening to me. And, you know, as a, as a manager of any sort of organization, you, you do know that people really would like to be able to be heard, and that seems to be happening here between all kinds of different parties. And that, to me, is always a recipe for really making good progress. So I was very impressed. I was also impressed with a few things. One is that just about every issue, at least that I know about, starting from wherever the stuff is produced, to wherever the stuff is actually consumed, was talked about tonight. We heard about stowage, we heard about, I need to know in advance when things are coming, we heard about storage on the dock, and leaving things, and free time. We heard about appointment systems, which is about trucking, we heard about turn times. We didn't hear a whole lot about warehousing, we did hear about the shrimp, that the shrimp have to come. But we heard really a lot, which demonstrates to me a great understanding of the supply chain as a whole. And again, I think that's a credit to Southern California, and where all of the people have, have come over the past, I'm gonna say, five to seven years. There are a couple of things that I thought weren't really emphasized as much as maybe we could have. The first is that the sort of elephant in the room here, I think, is competition. I liked Mike's line about the siblings, right, that we like to poke each other in the eye, but when something really happens, we get together. And historically, that's really true. When there's a real crisis here, people seem to come together. And in this case, I think the coming together has, has held almost longer than, than I've seen in the past. And so it's very promising to think that more of this coming together and more of this collaboration is on the way. Another point that I thought, and, you know, I'm an academic, so forgive me, but there was a lot of talk about data, and what I really loved was their mention of data sharing. We would even share our data in order to make things better. And that's not something you hear every day, and I would really encourage everyone to think about the possibilities of sharing data among yourselves, because it really can increase the efficiency of the system. As I said before, there were a couple of things I thought that weren't talked about. The other thing for me was honestly the surface side. I kind of wonder about how you could ever plan to be at the port at 11:59, given the highway system that we're dealing with here? And, you know, the windows of time that we would actually have to account for because of congestion? And so I, I think it's, it's wonderful that there's so much going on here to try to fix the port and the port operations, but at the end of the day, something has to happen as well on the surface transportation side. And reliability particularly, if you really want throughput to increase in the way that you've all talked about, you've gotta have that reliability on the surface side as well. And so I guess that's our next job, as we go through all this stuff. So in closing, as I said, I think this was a wonderful discussion. I'm really encouraged, I'm pleased, and I really look forward to the next chapter of collaboration at the ports, so thank you very much.
Thank you Jen, and, and thank you again to Bill, and to all of you for a really lively and engaging and informative discussion. I know the students in particular in the room, particularly my, my students who I'll be seeing next Thursday night, will, will have benefited a lot, and you've, you've helped me make the next lesson plan a lot easier, so thank you. We actually do have, make sure on your way out, you see Marissa who's got a nice commemorative plaque featuring the, the, I think the really catchy design this year for you to, to remember this event. As we conclude, a couple of reminders, tonight's proceedings will be captured in a summary report and made available on our website. If you'd like to access the video, have a copy of it, please go to the CITT website, probably in about a week, once it's all prepared, to find out how you contain a copy or access it on, access it online. We're very interested in your comments on tonight's program. There's a QR code on page six of your program with a link to a brief survey that helps us gauge your interest in future town hall topics. You can use your phone and access it now live on, on the screen, it'll take you right to the link. And if you're, if you're old school, we'll send it to you by email from when you register, there is absolutely no escape. Once again, we owe a great deal of gratitude to many, many people who dedicated time and effort, and, and the money, and the money to make this possible. Thank you first and foremost to our team at CITT, Alex Traver, our talented event coordinator and her amazing team. And our other, the other staff at CITT include Tyler Reeve, Marissa Idy, Angelie Logan, Brianna Lewis, and a team, and Tyler Reeve, and a team of really talented and hard-working students who help us every day do what we do. Royce DeRivera, Ian Livsey, Kylie Shahar, Orion Ghul, Jen Tran, and we have a visiting scholar here, Paige Wang from, from China, who's helped us as well. So thank you to all of you, and I hope I haven't left anyone out. I, I want to mention again, tonight's event is hosted by CITT and the College of Continuing and Professional Education. and Professional Education in the Met Trans Transportation Center, with generous support from USDOT and Caltrans, the Long Beach City College, Watson Land Company, BNSF Railway, the LA Customs Brokers and Freight Forwarders Association, and our Met Trans Associates, the Port of Long Beach, Southern California Association of Governments, LA Metro, Aerospace, APM Terminals, Majestic Realty, and the ILWU. And I would want to recognize Kristi Patton, who's the new Development Director for Met Trans, I think is still in the room, and if anyone has any questions about the Met Trans Associates, please see her on your way out. And finally, thanks to you, everyone, for coming. I know it's been a long day, starting with the pulse of the ports, and I'm thrilled with your dedication and commitment to the industry and to this university. I hope you found the information of value, and we hope to see you at next year's event, and we stand adjourned. Have a good evening.